Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call to order our regular city council meeting for Tuesday, November 20th, 2018. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Sylvia, roll call, please.
Mayor Mays?
Here.
Council President Garland?
Here.
Council Kuiper is absent. Council Young?
Here.
Council Brousne?
Here.
Council Griffin?
Here.
Council Rosner?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia. We have approval of the agenda. One item on the consent needs to be polled, Item A, and then approval of November 6th minutes. Any other change to the proposed agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Now we have an amended agenda, amended consent agenda. Just Item B, approval of November 7th, 2018, City Council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
We approve consent as amended.
Second.
All in favor of approving consent as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, council. Citizen comments. Time to address council. I'd love to have you fill out a form if you can, or you can fill it out afterwards. And Dr. Court, is he here yet?
Mayor, Dr. Court indicated that he had to go and get a document and would be back. So if you called him forward, if there's an opportunity later.
Okay. We can... Or we can do it later. We can do it towards... Yeah, later on. Anyone else like to address council? All right. We will come back to citizen comments after a public hearing. Public hearing, Sylvia?
The Sherwood City Council will hold a public hearing this evening to hear testimony on ordinance 2018-010, amending Chapter 12.16 of the Sherwood Municipal Code regarding utility facilities and the public right-of-way. This is the second hearing on this ordinance before the city council. The decision may be made by the council at the close of this hearing, or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain. If the matter is continued to a date and a date certain, this is the only notice of that date you will receive. The meeting this evening will be conducted as follows. Staff will present a staff report, questions by the council for staff, we'll receive any written testimony. We will then open the public hearing for testimony, and the time will be limited to four minutes per person. Any interested person may present testimony. We will then close the hearing, final comments by staff, questions of staff, if any, by the council, discussion by the council. If you wish to speak, please fill out the testimony form and submit it to the city recorder. The mayor will recognize those persons wishing to speak. Any questions should be addressed to the mayor. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record, as this hearing will be recorded, and limit your testimony to four minutes.
Thank you, Sylvia. Staff report. Josh?
Thank you, Mayor. This council previously heard this ordinance on November 6th, 2018. This ordinance is generally speaking something that staff brought forward to help ensure efficient use of the public right-of-way by utilities. There's been one change since the last version of this that you saw, which is an amendment to Section 12.16.070G. To clarify, that only applies to lineal utility facilities, not, for example, to poles or pole attachments. It involves installing additional infrastructure. That's a sectionally installing additional infrastructure. Otherwise, it's the same ordinance that you saw before, and I'm happy to answer any questions we have.
Great. Before we ask questions, I think we'll let any comments from the community, and we have a couple so far. Jessica Epley. Welcome, Jessica.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. For the record, I am Jessica Epley, E-P-L-E-Y, Manager of Government and External Affairs for Frontier Communications. Frontier Communications applauds the city's efforts to encourage efficient use of the public right-of-way and planning for its future. However, on reviewing the specific proposal, Frontier is unclear on the intent and the consumer impact. Aligned with previous testimony, Frontier suspects that others have raised similar concerns. Specifically, providing advance notice will likely delay the deployment of new infrastructure in your city. Telecommunications utility public right-of-way usage is specifically limited to 7% in state statute. However, this ordinance seeks to increase the overall compensation to the city of Sherwood. Additional fees, compensation, or consideration, including construction of telecommunications facilities and equipment, is specifically prohibited under ORS 221.515 at Sub 3. And finally, it bears repeating that any increase in costs to Frontier Communications will result in consumer costs increasing as well. I appreciate the opportunity to comment in this manner. We'd be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Paul Grove? Welcome, Paul.
Mayor, members of council, for the record, Paul Grove, the director, State Director of Government and Regulatory Affairs for Comcast, address 9605 Southwest Nimbus Avenue, Beaverton, Oregon 97008, submitted a letter, hopefully that you have received in advance. Frankly, I'm here tonight pinch-hitting for Tim Goodman, who testified at the last public meeting, and he had outlined a couple of extremely high-level concerns regarding the potential or proposed ordinance. Specifically, one was philosophical, the other were legal. The letter simply asked for a two-week extension until final determination of the ordinance, and I think, you know, understanding the circumstances that led to that letter, we think it's entirely appropriate for council to grant that. There still are some outstanding questions that we would like to engage with staff. Frankly, Tim has been our point person on this issue. He's the one that has the institutional knowledge on the matter, and we think to have a meaningful dialogue and engagement, it warrants an additional extension of time. I could go through a very high-level summary of the legal issues that range from the franchise agreement to preemption to other potential items that exist, but I don't think I could do it justice in the way that Tim or others from the team would on that front. So that basically summarizes the letter. Again, we would ask for a two-week extension until December 4th, so we can again have that meaningful engagement that I think the community deserves for a project of this scope.
Thank you very much, Paul.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address council on the proposed ordinance? Dr. Court, do you want to address this ordinance, or we'll come back to citizen comments? It's quite all right. So if you want to... After this public hearing, we'll go back to citizen comments, so you can talk about 5G, since it's... That's not what the public hearing is about. Cool. Anyone else? Here or not, we will close the public hearing and go to council questions of staff or council comments? Questions of staff or council comments?
I guess my office comment would be a request to postpone for two weeks. Are we entertaining that?
So we certainly can. I suspect this is... It's a new thing, a new proposed ordinance. I suspect it's going to be a living, breathing ordinance, and I think that as issues and ideas come up, we'll consider making changes to it. So we can, if we act on it today, we can still hear concerns from community members, business interests, and see if staff and council want to make amendments in the future, or we can wait.
I'll jump in. I would agree with that. I think while this isn't related to 5G, there is a 5G consideration here in that we have limited space in our public right-of-ways, and with the FCC ruling on 5G, we have potentially three more carriers coming in to run power and fiber along our public right-of-ways, so I am concerned about that. And the time clocks, is it time clocks? What's the term? Shot clocks. The 30-day shot clocks in the FCC ruling that we need to get in front of, so we can at least have a conversation with those carriers, you know, as we move forward.
So, again, maybe Josh could help. So if we don't act on this tonight and we wait two weeks, does that put the city at some risk? I mean, when we finally do enact this, I mean, how does this work?
So the ordinance as drafted would be effective January 1st, 2019. Ordinances are generally effective 30 days after they're enacted by council. So if you acted on December 4th, trying to remember days in the month, roughly, it's like a two-day potential delay in the effective date. So that would be the impacted, probably minimal. I don't expect there to be a lot of construction activity during that two-day period.
Have we heard anything on the lawsuit filed by... against the FCC?
A stay has been requested. There's not been a ruling on that yet. Even absent this stay, the effective date isn't, I believe it's mid-January anyway. So we, as long as we... If council waits until December 4th to act, we're still fine. Waiting longer than that potentially, you're getting into trickier territory.
If we were to act this evening, our ordinances are fluid. I mean, we've changed ordinances over time.
You can always amend your...
We can always amend our ordinances if there becomes a concern that's posed at a later date.
What is staff's feedback about waiting two more weeks?
Well, I think you heard from Josh in terms of the few days of impact. You do have a request from Comcast, who is a partner with us. We've got getting into details. Tim's situation was not something that was within his control. That's who we usually work with. You want to maintain good relations with partners. So by waiting, if it's a couple days difference, I mean, I personally would wait. I think you have the total discretion to make that decision. I don't see the urgency, if there's really only two or three days difference in time, to not honor that request.
And I will say, I've spoken with Frontier, Verizon, AT&amp;T, Comcast, to some degree, on this. In general, I've been able to, we've been able to address their concerns by having the conversation. There are still some concerns that you just heard from Frontier, but we haven't even had the opportunity to really have that conversation with Comcast yet. We don't really know what the nature of their concerns are. So there could potentially be some value, and if we have that conversation, maybe there's a small tweak we can make to the ordinance that resolves that concern.
I don't see any reason why we just shouldn't wait then, given it's only going to be a two-day possible delay.
I agree, two-day difference. Assuming we have room on the agenda for the fourth...
Yeah, we'll make room on the 4th. I don't want this being extended any further, because I think, as Josh said, there's risk the longer you wait. But if it's really two or three days, I think waiting two more weeks is reasonable. But again, it's your call, so.
So if people like to honor the two weeks, we would ask for a motion to continue this to a date certain, namely, December 4th, in which we would continue the second reading of the public hearing.
I make a motion to move this forward to a date uncertain of December 4th.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. All in favor of moving continuing ordinance 2018-010, the second reading, to December 4th? Say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Citizen comment. We will go back to citizen comment, and Dr. Court signed up. If anybody else would also like to add comment, we would entertain that as well.
Mayor?
Welcome.
My name is Dr. Court. I'm a chiropractic physician here in Sherwood, and I'm opposed to the 5G. I don't know if what I have to say tonight will be pertinent or will move anyone, but I've just jotted down a few notes. This morning, I spoke with the author of this book, Radiation Nation, which is a gift for you, Mayor. The FCC standards, as I understand, have not been revised in 30 years, and the standards were based on a 200-pound man, a Marine, and they were based on analog, the signal measuring, not thermal, like what is being measured now. There were no biological effects being measured. The second point is there have been no safety studies done on 5G. None. But thousands of safety studies have been done on 4G. And in fact, the FCC's own National Toxicology Program, the NTP, reports that EMF from 4G causes frontal lobe cancer and also heart issues. This is confirmed with thousands of studies in 4G. As a physician, I'm seeing neurological impact on children in this community, lots of them. Anxiety, depressions, sleep issues, and suicide is on the rise. It is epidemic. I don't know if you're aware of this, but in this country alone, a child attempts suicide every 38 seconds, and a child completes suicide 125 times a day. We lose 125 of our children every day in this country to suicide. That's 875 children per week. That's two jumbo jets hitting the ground every week for 52 weeks in this country, and I believe that is directly associated with this. As a board-eligible functional neurologist, I'm not wrong on this. Ladies and gentlemen, it is your job to keep us safe and to keep our children safe. Wi-Fi has been banned in preschools and grade schools in Europe. This is a ICD-10 diagnosis code disability in Europe. 4G is a disability in Europe. There are many, many people that are being sick, becoming sick from it. This is a resource. It's called Radiation Nation. Myself and several of my friends read this manuscript and were published in this book. I spoke with the author this morning, and that's what I wrote these notes off of. I urge you to educate yourselves and protect yourself. I have extra copies at my office available. I want to share something with you. This is... I don't know if you can hear this. This is an app that measures the Wi-Fi signal all around us. This is what I've filmed here in their head, okay? Maybe not quite this, but it feels like bees in their heads. I'm seeing more and more teachers being injured by students trying to get out of the classrooms. I treat these people, and I suffer from EMF, and I have suffered since 1999. It began with pain in my head, earaches. My hands burn when I hold my phone. I can't hold my phone for very long. I have constant tinnitus, constant headaches. This has become my life's work, and I'm here to help those who suffer just like me. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'll stick around and we can talk later.
Thanks, Dr. Court.
May I approach the bench?
Yeah. Anyone else like to address council? We'll close citizen comments, move on to city manager report.
Mayor and council, the only thing I want to remind folks with the Thanksgiving holiday this week, City Hall and the library will be closed, obviously, on Thanksgiving Day, but also the Friday afterwards. And I just want to make sure folks know that it's a two-day holiday in terms of City Hall and library facilities. Didn't have anything else to report. We do have a URA work session after your regular council meeting, as a reminder, and if you have questions for me or any of the department heads that are here, we'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Joe? Awesome. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
I'll go first, be brief. I want to thank Council President Shawn for covering for me at a book reading at one of our fantastic grade schools. I'm sorry I missed it when I was in Virginia. I mentioned it was a lot of fun. I hope to hear about it. Remember the Christmas parade and our tree lighting is coming up the first Saturday after Thanksgiving, so that's the first, December 1st. So it'll be a lot of fun. Hopefully, the weather will be just like today, dry, beautiful. It'll be an awful lot of fun, so be there. Wish everyone out there to have a very safe and merry Thanksgiving. If you're traveling, be safe. If you're staying at home, be safe, and don't overindulge in Turkey and football. There might even be some ESPN NBA, excuse me, NBA on TV. I can't remember what sport. There's three football games, I know that much, and Go Ducks against the Civil War, but, you know, our bees. As long as they have fun and everyone's safe, that's all said and done. And Go Wild, Go Lynfield Wildcats. Okay. I'll keep it that. What is, go from there. Council President?
Yeah, sure. I'll go ahead. So as the mayor mentioned, I read that Hopkins Elementary had a reading night this last Thursday, the 15th, so several people from the community were invited to read to all the, from kindergarten to fifth grade. I read to fourth graders and fifth graders, and I read a book called What Does a Mayor Do? And so I learned a lot from that book.
Did it say nothing?
No. It was a very good book, and...
Not by example?
Yeah, and so the fourth graders had a lot of great questions. One of their questions was, "Why didn't Ross just go into the Albertsons and leave Safari Sam's alone?" Was one of the questions. I thought it was brilliant, but I told them that that was out of our control. And the fifth graders really wanted In-N-Out Burger in Sherwood, so I told them I would look into that as well. So that was a great night, and so a lot of fun and some very smart kids out there at Hopkins Elementary. Previous night on Wednesday, the 14th, I was invited to speak to Cub Scout Troop 710. They were working on one of their civic badges, so they wanted to talk to somebody in government. So this Cub Scout Troop 710 are a whole bunch of kids that live right in my neighborhood, so they invited me to come, and they had a lot of great questions as well, very active, and they may be coming here to counsel shortly to lead us in the pledge at some point. So they want to get more involved in learning more about the government rather than what I told them. So looking forward to that. That's really about all I've done in the last couple of weeks.
Council Young?
I had the pleasure of attending our city's Veterans Day ceremony, and that was, we had a really great turnout. I was impressed to see so many kids in the audience, as well as adults, but it was just a good turnout. I attended our chamber breakfast, where Chief Growth did a presentation to our business leaders on our staffing challenges for our police department. I think it was a great conversation that he opened up to meet with some business leaders to propose some ideas and see how open they might be to some of his ideas or have some solutions, you know? So I think he's got some folks that were interested that day that he's going to be meeting with that can hopefully come up with some ideas for us. I attended the grand opening of the Oregon Street Townhomes right over here, and beautiful, beautiful townhomes. That was a great project, yeah, with Council Russell, Mayor Mays.
Don't need to drop names. It's okay.
And then also, we had another great business open over in the Walmart Shopping Center called Blaze Fitness that several of us attended, and that is it for me.
Awesome. Council Griffin?
Thank you.
I'm always reluctant.
Let's see, so my stuff's already been talked about. So Parks Board coming up on December 3rd at 7:00 p.m. That's always very interesting, and I would like to, if...
They're interesting.
They're very interesting.
I know. I'm just giving you that time.
I love going to the Parks Board meetings. We have a great time. I've had several citizens who live on, since I'm living temporarily on the other side of town, on the north side of town, I've had several citizens ask me about the blankety-blank light at Walgreens. And I talked to Bob Gladdy, our engineer, today. I was in tears for part of that conversation. Anyway, he said that, you know, the state is probably going to be coming back and recalibrating. It's on a set timer system right now. It is not necessarily responsive to those sensors that are on the ground, and anybody who's tried to get through there at a certain time knows. There is nobody over here. Why is the light going green? Oh, let's let the non-existent, left turn people go now. Still, we're not going. Well, it's because they haven't come back yet. So there is hope, hopefully, in the next few weeks, is what he thought, that they might be coming in and fixing.
Days, hours?
Minutes.
The better.
Tomorrow would be great.
Yes. I mean, I was actually, I actually saw, and this is what they did not want to happen. I saw, I was coming south on Edie headed towards McDonald's, McDonald's, and I saw traffic back up, right turn off 99. This is what we feared. We didn't want it to happen. Back up onto 99, like several cars down. So I think they know they've got to make some adjustments, because that's exactly what we...
Life phones ringing.
They did not want it to happen. So anyway, if you're watching, they're still working with that thing.
So hopefully, they'll be out tomorrow.
Please don't shoot the lights. Somebody threatened, don't...
Tomorrow would be great for the collective ODOT people in the audience. Great, 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 great to have you out tomorrow.
That's it. No.
Council Brousne? They won't come out of your ass.
That's right.
That's true. All right. Just a reminder that we do have a charter review committee, and our next meeting is on December 6th, but if there's anybody in the audience or listening land who have ideas for the charter to let us know by November 29th is the new date, correct? Correct. Okay, December 4th, okay. So that's, there's still opportunity there. Some updates at the library. It's food for fines time, so December 3rd through the 9th. If you have any outstanding fines, you can bring in a non-perishable item, and it's equal to $1 off the fine. And that non-perishable item can be anything that's canned or something like that. And then friends of the library are selling books at the library, and they're like new books, and they make great Christmas gifts. So if you have a reader in your family, please consider shopping at the library. Marjorie Stewart Center, for those of you who attend some of the gatherings there, will be closed Monday, December 10th through Friday, December 14th for the repairs. So that's going to be pretty exciting to see all the new... Huh? The upgrades, yeah. And then before they close on Monday, December 3rd, Professor Gary Tandy will be there, and they'll be discussing the literary impact of C.S. Lewis. And then immediately following the repairs on December 17th, there's an 11:00 a.m. Estate Planning 101. And then there's all kinds of other activities, Active for Life Workshop happening on December 18th. And then, of course, the favorite holiday party on December 21st will be taking place there at the Senior Center. In Chamberland, I hear the hiring process is going well.
They're having second round interviews. Sorry. My understanding, they're having a second round of interviews today.
That's what I heard. So for those of you...
Another building in this fine community.
Oh, excellent. So those of you who don't know, Lanner, Lana, Lanner, Lana is leaving the chamber, taking another position in the city, or not, well, within the city of Sherwood, but with another business, and so they're hiring a new chamber director. A couple of ribbon-cuttings coming up. December 3rd, Planet Fitness at 4:30. And December 6th, Hill Tax Payroll and Bookkeeping is 5:30 is the grand opening. And December 12th is Evergreen Gas at 5:00 p.m. And then the favorite chamber meeting of all, of all the breakfasts, is at Owl's on December 11th. Last but not least...
Owl's Garden Center.
Owl's Garden Center. Yeah, what did I say?
Owl's. Make sure when it's...
Owl's Garden Center.
It's not of the guy named Owl's place.
Chief, there's a Coffee with a Cop coming up, correct?
Owl's Home on...
So December 3rd is Coffee with a Cop at? Roy Rogers Starbucks. 7:00 a.m., so another opportunity to spend some time with Sherwood's finest, and that's all I have.
Thanks for being... Councilor Rosner?
A couple things. Councilor Young and I met with Courtney Neuron. I think that's how you pronounce her last night, name yesterday. She's our new House Rep-elect for this district. We had a, god, we ended up talking for about two hours. It was a really good Congress...
It was a really good conversation, talked about some of the challenges we face here in the city and strategies for how she can help us out moving forward, so that, that was a lot of fun. I enjoyed that. I attended the school board meeting for the high school. It was a very good meeting. They went over their strategic plan and gave an update on that, which was really fascinating. They have a, I'll mention, they have a really interesting pilot program going on at Hopkins called Culture of Care, to help students kind of deal with their emotions in the classroom and, and how they work with others and stuff, and this is at the grade school level, obviously, so that was super interesting to hear. The student body council at the high school got to attend a statewide conference and got to network with other student body councils, and we got an update on that. That was, that was pretty, pretty interesting to hear, but a lot of fun stuff going on over there. Most importantly, the high schools had a schedule right now, which is awesome, so, yeah.
Try us month of November and, long, long times.
Yes.
This is great.
Also attended the historical society board meeting, and it was also their annual meeting where they had all their, their members could come. I think a couple of members showed up. That was a good meeting. They elected some new members to the board. Dave Gilmore has taken a position on the board. If you don't know Dave, he does all those wonderful pictures on the Facebook page that we get to enjoy all the time. And I just wanted to, the Main Street Group attended their board meeting as well, and just put a plug out there, they are looking for board members right now, so if there's people out in the community that want to get involved and work with the Main Street Group, reach out to them, or you can reach out to me, and I will get you in contact with them. And that's all I got.
Awesome. Thanks, Tim. And on the vacancy point, we've posted it, and we have two vacancies on the planning commission, and I think that's the only place we have vacancies right now, pending. Soon to have two, once council-elect Doug Scott gets sworn in, in five weeks, six weeks, before you know it. Anything else for the collective before we adjourn to work session, executive session? U R A work session. We are adjourned.